Hope everybody feel well, hope everybody had a great Thanksgiving. Tonight, we're going to start with our work session to review the agenda for the voting session. Then we'll move to do our reorganization meeting, and then we'll do the actual voting session following that. So when we get into the actual voting meeting, we'll do our student recognition and public recognition at that point as well. So we'll get through some of the dirty work first, and then I'll take the paper. But there are agendas, I believe those are the up in the back.
Right on the edge of the.
We would like to have agendas for the evening along with some other documentation for, we have our 50 year anniversary first edition magazine, which is very well done, as well as we have another student recognition on top of that. And then we have a presentation from Mr. Agnelli, correct?
Yep.
For thank you, all right. So for our work session, we'll review the agenda. We'll call it order, prayer, pledge of allegiance, roll call, et cetera. Number five is our approval of minutes. Number six is our treasury report. Number seven is our approval filled for our general account for food service. Number eight is our accounting of taxes. Number nine, we'll do our principals list, so you can have that about that. Student recognition, and then number 10 is our public recognition. Our enrollment report is listed there for 1800 students total. Number 12, winter sports passes. So this will set admission prices at three for Western Wayne students with the school ID. Two dollars for students without ID, three dollars for adults. Family pass will cost fifteen dollars for the sports season, and the rest of the pass will cost 10. Twenty-two, twenty-three sports season, winter sports season. Number 13, there's a waiver of expulsion hearing and stipulation. That is for student-related incidents. Number 14, we have a memorandum of understanding for coaching position adjustments. We do not change the number of coaches that are in the contract. What this MOU does allows some flexibility at the junior high level where that instead of being labeled seventh, eighth, one coach for seven, one coach for eighth grade, one coach for ninth grade, they're all labeled seventh, eighth, and ninth grade so that they can be interchanged and utilized in different capacities depending on the need. If, let's say, a team has to collapse because of injuries or lack of participation, and those students get brought up to the JV or varsity, so that coach would also be able to be utilized at that point. So it's just, again, giving more flexibility in the event that a sport's not able to field a team, whatever circumstances. Number 15 is an overnight trip. This is our senior class trip for April 20th to 23rd. Who were Baltimore, Maryland and Washington DC chaperones, Lee Teshlog and Perry Goodfryer. Number 16 is an agreement with Amanda Linelli, a certified school psychologist, to provide psychological services and special education documentation preparation as needed for the 22, 23 school year at a rate of seventy-five dollars per hour. This is not full-time, this is just as needed in the event to utilize additional school psychology services. Seventeen, this is an agreement with the Gregory Center. This is an annual update for this contract. Gregory Center for Applied Behavioral Analysis at the rate of a hundred dollars per hour for contracted classroom services. Number 18, we have transportation drivers and substitutes. So we have three drivers as listed for cabbage, sarawas, and fruits. One is a bus driver, two are band drivers. Number 19, we have a contract, a new transportation contract for band number 121 to Colonial Academy effective November 29. Number 20, we have substitute list. We have two custodial substitutes, a nurse substitute, and two food service substitutes as listed there. Letter B, we have five resignations, one as assistant business manager, one as transportation slash AD secretary, two food service positions, assistant boys basketball coach, and a boys junior high coach as well. Number 20C, our appointments. Number one is for a school nurse, step one B, for the 2022 school year, effective the second semester of this school year. Number two is for professional ability teacher of deaf and hard of hearing slash special education, effective January 3rd, 2023. Letter D is, we are going to table, that is an appointment from an athletic director, so that will not be voted upon this evening. Letter E, we have free assignments for district transportation duties. As listed there, we have one as a stipend and two as hourly increases. Letter F, we have three winter coaches to appoint. One, two for junior high boys basketball, and one as an assistant boys basketball as listed there. Two as the result of the resignation previously listed. Letter G, we have a volunteer for drama club for the school year. Number 21, we have our scheduled meetings for the 22, I'm sorry, for January through December of 2023. All meetings are held on the first Wednesday of the month except when noted at discipline. And those are as listed, and meetings will be held at 6 o'clock here in the district office unless otherwise noted. And work sessions will be scheduled as needed. Number 22, we have informational items and dates to remember. This past Saturday, December 3rd, we have a high school semi-temple at Canton Road in Brooklyn. Last night, we had our seventh and eighth grade band concert. This evening, we have RDW Winter Musical, days three and four. Tomorrow night, December 8th, we have a middle school chorus concert. December 8th to 9th, we have high school CPR testing. December 9th, we have family reunion night at the high school LGI in 7PM. December 10th, we have our drive-through breakfast with Santa at the high school parking lot at 9:00 AM. December 16th, we have our high school Christmas concert at 7:00 PM at Evergreen. We have PTA Santa's workshop on December 12th. On the 13th at Evergreen, we have a third and fourth grade concert with a snow date of the 15th. December 23rd is a early dismissal at noon for our Christmas break. And then from December 24th, January 2nd, there is no school for our holiday break. We have a student teacher from Marywood University for informational purposes for laywork at the high school. And we have correspondence, our administrative reports, federal programs, any other business to be discussed. And then 29 is, we did have an executive session on November 30th for personnel during the administrative district office. And we just had an executive session prior to this meeting for personnel as well. Future meetings, January 11th, 6:00 PM work session followed by the voting meeting. And that's the agenda. Any questions, comments, concerns? Good. Moving along then, we will open up our reorganization meeting followed by our oral board meeting. We call the board's reorganization meeting to order. Start please with the roll call. Ms. Semen.
Mr. Collins.
Here.
Mrs. DeCiazzo.
Excused. She's giving me her proxy.
Rick Hope will be her proxy. Mr. Enzlin.
Here.
Mr. Gershey.
Here.
Mr. Gambida.
He's also excused.
Excused, and Mr. Gogolski has his proxy. Mr. Gogolski.
Here.
Mr. Hope.
Here.
Mr. Ocklin.
Here.
And Mr. Wood.
Also excused.
Excused, and Mr. Gershey has his proxy. Mr. President, you have six board members present with three proxies.
Thank you, Ms. Semen. The oath of office.
There was no.
We don't have anybody's unit, so skip right over that. Next, we'll go to the election of the temporary chair. I'm going to nominate Mr. Gershey as the temporary chair. Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, Mr. Gershey.
Okay, as secretary chair then, the nominations are open for president.
I'll make the nomination for Rick Hope as president.
Okay, Mr. Hope. Are there any more nominations for president? No more, I need to declare that closed. We'll do a voice vote according to Robert's rules. If you're re-electing Mr. Hope as president, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries, Mr. Hope is re-elect. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Nominations are now open for the vice president. Do we have any nominations?
I will nominate Mrs. DeCiazzo. She's not here, so we give her.
Okay, Mrs. DeCiazzo is nominated. Are there any more nominations for vice president? Hearing none, I declare the nominations for vice president closed. We'll do a voice vote for that. All those in favor of Mrs. DeCiazzo being vice president, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Anyone opposed? Any extensions? Motion carries. Is there any other business for tonight? Motion to adjourn this meeting? All in favor of the agenda?
Thank you, Mr. Gershey.
You're welcome.
Okay, so that takes care of some of the business for tonight. Welcome everybody to this end of meeting. We'll move on with our, I'm going to call the work, the regular meeting. Start with a brief prayer followed by the pledge of allegiance. Heavenly Father, let us always keep guides for students and examples and mentors to them, guiding them to become their best.
The pledge of allegiance is to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, united in heaven, with liberty and justice for all.
Ms. Semen, roll call Enzlin.
Mr. Collins.
Here.
Mrs. DeCiazzo is excused with Mr. Hope as her proxy for the meeting. Mr. Enzlin.
Here.
Mr. Gershey.
Here.
Mr. Gogolski.
Here.
Mr. Gambida is also excused with Mr. Gogolski having his proxy for the meeting. Mr. Hope.
Here.
Mr. Ocklin.
Here.
And Mr. Wood is excused with a proxy to Bill Gershey for Mr. Wood. You have six members present with three additional proxies. I'm sorry, and Attorney Ellis also, thank you. And Dr. Barrett.
Here.
Dr. LaRosa.
Here.
Ms. Semen is here. Mr. Gogolski.
Here.
Mrs. Bradley.
Here.
Mr. Pigeon.
Here.
Mrs. Miller.
Excused.
Ms. Watson.
Excused.
Mrs. Fitzsimmons.
Here.
Mr. Barr.
Here.
Mr. Black.
Here.
Dr. Janich.
Here.
Dr. Shemansky.
Excused.
Mrs. Gregory.
Here.
Mrs. Liptak.
Here.
Mr. Seaman.
Thank you. Move on to number five is the approval of minutes for the special meeting for general purposes on the 26th. For work session on the 26th and the regular board meeting on November 2nd. Motion for that, please?
I move that we approve the minutes of those three meetings.
I'll say.
Motion is made by Mr. Gershey and seconded by Mr. Gogolski. Is there any further discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed by saying no? Are there any extensions? Motion carries. On to number six, the treasury reports. Motion for that, please?
I move to accept the treasury reports for general and food service accounts. I'll say.
Mr. Collins. Okay, so motion is made by Mr. Gogolski and seconded by Mr. Collins. Are there any questions or further discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed by saying no? Are there any extensions? Okay, carries on to number seven, approval of bills. Motion for that, please?
I move for the approval of bill for the general and food service accounts.
That one was made, a motion was made by Mr. Gogolski and seconded by Mr. Ocklin. Are there any questions or discussion on the general account or the food service account? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed by saying no? Any extensions? Any more questions, please? Mr. Gogolski, we have some students for us to recognize?
Yes.
Awesome, all right, that's great.
Thank you, Mr. President. First this evening, we'd like to recognize the principals list students for the first marking period. Students on the principals list are represented by the individuals, the top two as far as grade point average in the marking period. We'll start with the ninth grade students, who I don't believe are in attendance. Top average was Paul Baroski, and our second highest average was Grace Moser. Congratulations to that. 10th grade, our top average was Leah Hartman, and our second highest average was Velita Belanova. For 11th grade, our top average was Adrian Agnello. And our second highest average was Rainey Carroll. For our 12th grade, our highest average was Mackenzie Lady, and our second highest average was Marshall Davis. Congratulations to all of those students.
Back here, I apologize for that.
Got them out of order.
I believe you read these all along the, remember the youth adventure, reading, you remember the youth adventure today. Youth Foundation?
No, they're not reading.
Oh, that's not reading, I'm sorry. I apologize. I heard your name and.
Yeah, okay.
My apologies.
Thank you. Additional student recognition tonight, Mr. Hope. We would like to recognize a senior art student, Angelie Delion Bella. Angelie's the daughter of Michelle Delion and Joseph Bellas and Ariel. You have in front of you, at least at the board, the Happenings Magazine cover here as a part of your packet. That is the artwork of Angelie. And if you flip the page over, you'll see the featured piece on her, which I'll read a short little excerpt of. She's been considering a career in art, and she prefers to work with the curly paint because she, which came to a surprise to her because she remembers originally, she found it so difficult, creating art is simply a way of expressing what people feel. She deserves much, or she derives a much satisfaction when she creates something of which she's very proud, and we're very proud, Angelie and her accomplishments. Congratulations to you, Angelie. I also invited Mr. Hayden here, who is our art teacher, art department chair. Mr. Hayden, do you have anything to add on behalf of Angelie?
Definitely, always nice things to say about her. So as you see, she's on the cover of Happenings Magazine. They used to be a competition until they decided just to stick with Western Wayne students. It's an honor for them to give us a chance to be featured on the magazine, so hopefully involve the students in their July issue as well. Angelie's also had artwork in our literary magazine, which you may have received in the spring. She also had her artwork published in the Celebrating Art Anthology, which is a nationwide competition. So she competed against other high school students across the country. She, we're waiting the results on the Scranton Times Artist of the Month competition. We have four pieces that win, so we'll see if we, you know, earning those months as far as having the students be recognized as one of their Artist of the Month. Angelie is also the vice president of the National Art Honor Society. She's helped out a lot with the 50th anniversary of the high school, coordinating fundraising, the parade we had, all those kind of events. Hopefully, we'll stay with it throughout the year as we proceed ahead. And her future plans include art education. Hopefully, she, she's waiting on acceptance into Keystone and Quitsdown, but she's definitely interested in going to Quitsdown and major in art education. Thank you.
Once again, we'd like to congratulate Angelie and her family. And while we have Mr. Hayden here, we'd also like to recognize Mr. Hayden. Mr. Hayden has been unbelievable this year in his organization of several of the 50th anniversary activities for Western Wayne. He was absolutely the primary organizer of the 50th anniversary parade, which was a, which was a great success, and has done a tremendous, tremendous job highlighting the school over the last, you know, 50 years, including the other piece that you have in front of you here, and I have some extras here if you'd like to grab some. But we have the fall issue of the 50th anniversary of the magazine here for Western Wayne, which Mr. Hayden put together, put countless hours of time and effort in, and again, has done an absolutely incredible job this year in addition to his work with our art students. You know, I happen to think we have the best visual art department and students in the area, and it's not really close. That's a credit to Mr. Hayden and the entire art department, and they continue to do an incredible job year after year. And that's no accident, you know, except on Mr. Hayden, so thank you.
And finally, I'm going to turn it over to Adrian Agnello here, who has a presentation for the floor.
Good evening, everyone, thank you for having me. The high school PBIS team would like to present the Western Wayne School Board with the photograph. This photograph represents the work of an amazing group of students and teachers. For background information, PBIS, or Positive Behavioral Interventions and Supports, is a nationwide, evidence-based tiered framework for supporting students' behavioral, academic, social, emotional, and mental health needs. PBIS improves social, emotional competence, academic success, and school climate. It also improves teacher health and well-being. It is a way to create positive, predictable, equitable, and safe learning environments where everyone can practice. The photograph that you are receiving was captured as a fundraiser for PBIS initiatives and fun activities called blowouts for students. Some other high school events that PBIS supported this year are quarterly recognition for students with a 95% GPA or better, recognition for GPA improvement of 3% or better from one quarter to the next, or perform for perfect attendance awards. We also use CATM, a token of econ, or a token economy system, to reward other extraordinary student behaviors. When you look at this picture, please note that in order for it to happen, the entire student body needed to work together toward a common goal. The students and band had to pre-plan and create the formations on paper. They also assisted all students on the field into those formations. This required cooperation by hundreds of teams involved. We are so proud of our students and our school, and this is a visual reminder of the importance of school, community, and teamwork.
So that was everything, Mr. Gogolski?
Yes.
All right, very good, thank you. Thank you all, congratulations, and wonderful to hear about all of your accomplishments, you guys, why we're here. So we really appreciate you. Beautiful cover here for the magazine, that's a very festive, very festive. Adrian, thank you.
You're welcome.
Congratulations for the PBIS and the presentation of the picture. All right, and we want to, the recognition of the public, is there anyone? Oh yeah, if any of you would like to leave students if you want to stay, you're welcome. Would like to leave, now's a great time to speak.
Have a great night.
Thank you.
A wonderful holiday. Thank you. All right, is there anyone that, president, you can bring to the board?
I have a question, please. Do we still do recordings of the meetings?
Yes.
Audio recordings, is there a way for that to become available on the website for people that may not be able to attend? So that they can hear what was discussed before, not, not to outdo what you normally do, you wait and you approve the minutes, but they can actually hear the audio?
Yeah, we have, we have.
I'm not sure if that's public record before it's.
It would be similar, it would be similar to what we did when we did Zoom meetings?
Yeah, well, I, well, I.
That probably isn't public record, I don't know if I'll put it on the internet by the way, but.
Yeah. Because it's not going to be transcribed, it's not going to be interpreted, it's just the raw data.
Right.
So that way, there would be no possibility of anybody manipulating or altering it, it would come directly. It would come directly from the district and just the audio.
Okay, we'll, we'll look into it and we'll discuss it and then we'll make sure.
Okay.
You know what, we'll figure it out, okay?
Great, thank you. And I'm still a big fan of you guys videotaping. Last meeting, I couldn't make it. I had duties at the clinic, so I hate to see it go for another whole month. If somebody really had something important that they wanted to hear about and just couldn't get there on time. I think that would be very beneficial for the community.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Is there anyone else? Okay. And we need one with a consent block again tonight. We just discussed all these agenda items. So we're going to block on, vote on them as a block. Number, so we'll ask for a block of number 12 through 21 withholding number 20D. Motion for that, please?
I make that motion.
You want me to say it or you say it? That's fine. And we have a second. All right, so the motion for the consent block number 12 through 21 withholding number 20D was made by Mr. Gershey, seconded by Mr. Ocklin. Is there any discussion on any of those or does anyone have any others that they'd like to withhold? Okay, hearing none, we'll move on. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed by saying no? Are there any abstentions? Okay, motion carries. Now, motion to table number 20D until we're ready to act on it.
I'll make the motion, I'll be table 20D.
Motion made by Mr. Collins, seconded by Mr. Ocklin. Any further discussion on that? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed by saying no? Are there any abstentions? Okay, that motion, that agenda item is tabled. I compared, just went through everything and talked about the informational dates. So I'm not going to go through that again. We did have an executive session, which we also said just prior to this meeting. Is there any correspondence for the board? And we have a chance of the superintendents, assistant superintendents, principals reports, running for federal programs. Is there any other business from anyone else? Okay. We have a meeting on Wednesday, November 30th at 6pm. An executive session for personnel matters in the admin building. Future meetings Wednesday, January 11th, 2023 at 6pm. It'll be a work session, followed by the public board meeting here in the admin building. Case in point, whether the meetings will be held on January 12th or the next school day. That's it. Motion to adjourn. Mr. Gershey, thank you. Everybody have a great holiday.